We're live.
We're live.
We are live.
I don't think we can swear like normal because we're live.
She said us girls got to clean up my language.
Yes, because I know you two are out of control, right? Okay. Just the State Board of Account, I think I mentioned it last year, State Board of Accounts wanted everybody to livestream their meetings. Well, I've been debating to use that camera footage or just set it up on our laptop. So you can view everything here. So this is our first one.
Things that were in my company meetings when all the boys were in there, language is not all that good.
Blue collar burgers. And I can edit it too, I think. It's not the live portion.
It's not who we're watching. I'm very busy here, I know everybody trying to watch all over the stage. I'm feeling a bit of a riddle. We ain't but the eye field. Sort of dropped on me a while back. So she looked the looks. Thanks for going down to sixty-one or sixty and crashed out with a chair falling asleep if I missed the.
I've always got smarty.
My goodness, Christine came by afterwards to check on me. It's going back up, it's like a sweet time. I'm on pump like she is, so.
You're on pump?
Yeah, I've been on the pump since two thousand. I found out I was diabetic in ninety-nine. Twelve, fourteen. Genetics are just fun.
Yeah, I know both my parents were diabetic, of course, they didn't notice for a couple later about my dad with, because of his heart condition surgery. They were going to send me the cases for that, then I then derailed. So we didn't really show up till much later on him, but like, yeah, it strikes him because here I am, you know, young guy, I'm sucking on pizzas and beer and and cokes like there go tomorrow, then hmm.
Yeah, it gets people in the weirdest, weirdest times. Okay, seven o'clock.
All right, it's seven o'clock. But everybody would please stand eyes and face the flag and repeat the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty. We'll now call on Tom Boyd, me, of July. All right, well, thanks. Okay. That's because we are now on livestreaming, which is right now on the transfer agenda, you will see that on the side, the list of all members of the board and Melanie on here as well. So all board members, our attorney and our court treasurer are all present for our meeting. First off is a big chance to look over the minutes from last month. And if you have any, any remarks, you used to make changes or additions or corrections that seem to be made. If not, then I ask for motion to pass.
There's a, there's a correction.
Okay, go ahead, that's clear.
Because it doesn't show the least that being present. I wasn't.
No, you, you were absent.
Well, but there's seconds by her, like, oh, yeah, wait, I was confused.
That was the month before where I was.
Okay.
Because there was, yeah, the month before I had made an emergency.
Generally, he typed them up for me, so I'll just.
He just took off the last previous month, probably.
Yeah, okay.
And I didn't even notice that.
Well, I guess I made just one.
We hadn't heard that. And wrong, that's a correction.
Make the adjustment and we're good.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Minute minutes last month, okay, I have a motion to second please. And second, if all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, okay, thank you very much. Okay. Well, we'll go with the town reports. You're up first, if you would.
All right, evening. Underhand out, there's a couple of pictures, the first picture is that fatal fire, that crash about one o'clock sunny morning up there on twenty-four. The car in the picture, that's a Walton police car, Matt was the first one there. They found her, the driver of one of the vehicles was trapped at the car explode on impact. The second vehicle, they found her trying to crawl out, they pulled her out, and the median, that's Matt and another guy standing there in the median by the flame. The other guy's a race car driver coming back from racing Fort Wayne, he grabbed his furry tartan suit and they covered her, protected from the flame. Otherwise, she might not, might not have made it. So I thought that was on everybody's cards, especially a passerby who stopped to help, that way.
You know what caused it?
He was going the wrong way, he was going west in eastbound lanes. If it's who we think it is, we tracked him back to Eagle's Point, he's an undocumented guy from Honduras. He'd been drinking all day at Eagle's Point, the people urging him not to leave, he just bought the car so the car wasn't registered in his name. But there's no, all the VIN numbers, nothing melded off the car, the car actually melded into the road. If you go down that way now, make it a rough roadside because it actually melded the concrete, it was so intense.
Do we have, do they have any extinguisher in a squad car?
Pardon? Yeah, but for something like that, it would have been, I mean, that's.
Well, I was just maybe.
Yeah, and we have a spark extinguisher, what happens though, these cars, they have electric fuel pumps when they hit, as long as there's juice, that fuel pump's pumping, and it's just like a blowtorch, it just blows that flame on there. I mean, I'm just a miracle to have two fatalities, unfortunately, we had one, but. And I talked to Matt then right after that, and I just was with the rest of the night, it, it kind of messed with him a little bit because he, there's nothing you can do. I mean, you do what you can do, but you can't, can't go into the fire and try and get the other one, so. And then the second picture, that's the guy that, I was with US Marshal Service here in town last week. They've been tracking this guy for a couple of years, wanted for murder on North Carolina. We located him here about three quarters mile out of town, he'd been hanging around town. Fifty-five prior arrests, community's first murder in two thousand twelve, he was nineteen. Community's second murder, he came up here and tried to, I tell you, people come to small towns and try to blend in, try to hide. And we're seeing more and more of that, you know? That's why you gotta be aware.
How'd you figure out that it was him just from?
I think they had been, well, what happens, usually, the guys get greedy and they file a tax return. And that tax return lights up all kinds of, US Marshal Service, they got all the toys and whistles and stuff you can imagine.
Yeah.
They monitor all this stuff, they say, hey, this guy's just made a tax return, let's see where he comes with it. Well, it translates to that phone into the bank, then it'll ping his phone, what actually happened, we pinged his phone. That phone was within two meters where he was. But, yeah, they were all around town last week, but the thing is, those guys are all dressed in blue jeans with jackets on, you never know the US Marshal until they, they roll up. They had seventeen agents in town for him because he'd already shot at police in North Carolina before. So they weren't taking any chances with him. So, so fortunately, that went down good, nobody got hurt, and he's out of the area, or he won't be once they get him extradited back to North Carolina. Okay, other things. The desktop is over ten years old. I've been here, I left Sheriff's Department two thousand nineteen, it was five years old when I left, so probably eleven years old. It runs on Windows ten, which is not supported anymore. It'll crash halfway through something, so I don't know if you guys want to spend the money and have someone come in and try to update it, or what you want to do, that's, but I'm just saying that when Windows, I can't update anything because Windows is not supported.
You just want me to start looking at different computers with you?
It's up to you guys, but.
Because I can do that, I mean, we can go look on the computer, that way I can just order it then.
Because I, I think you get somebody in here, those guys are like a hundred dollars an hour just to come and look at a problem. And plus, they diagnose it, maybe you put a new driver updated or whatever.
But I mean, if that computer's that old. I'd say it probably are best, but just to, to look.
You guys know what you need to do.
Watch you, yeah, I was in much of it.
It needs an antivirus, but I guess you could.
We're working on the budget.
No, I mean, a budget for him to start looking or you start looking, like.
We have the funds.
I don't want to put an antivirus on an old computer, that's why.
What I'm saying, did you want to throw out a ballpark figure, what you think he'll be spending?
I have no idea, I have not bought a computer in years.
I buy a laptop.
My laptop was two grand and that was several years ago.
I think, I think it's a tough one.
Laptop and wifi, we have wifi.
Okay, well, I can either.
You could do everything on the laptop, though.
Yeah, as long as it's got the USB to download, you know, the flash drive.
Okay, well, we can start throwing some stuff around.
Fourth of July, no problems, mom, Bob, Matt and I work. Now, whoever put the flags along the highway was at the, they didn't do, you did, Mike?
What, what computer is it now, is it an HP, is it a Dell?
This computer here?
Yeah. We're gonna want to line them up so they talk to each other.
Line what up?
If he has an HP.
If he has an HP, he wants, he want a laptop, right?
Yes.
So we'll look for an HP.
It is, the storage is so small, eight years ago, we had to get another drive put on it for storage.
Right, okay.
When I got mine in the back, I took it to Logan Tech, they called there on Ludway. The guys were, we use it as a legion. And it's expensive when it comes out, but he'll do it at shop and he doesn't do it.
What are you looking for, seventeen inch monitor?
So the council's all okay if we move.
We'll make a motion to grab him a new HP laptop.
Say a motion.
Seventeen inch.
All for her, aye?
Aye.
You opposed, Tom?
Thank you.
Start the process.
Okay. Twenty twenty-seven's gonna be the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Town of Walton.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if you guys are aware of that. It was founded by Gilbert Wall in twenty, in nineteen fifty, eighteen fifty-two. So I thought for hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary now would maybe give you a couple of years, you guys to plan if you wanted to do anything special at that time. Maybe, I don't know if you guys want to get a committee or whatever.
Do you know which month of date that was, the times incorporated?
Twenty, eighteen fifty-two?
Eighteen fifty-two.
Eighteen fifty-two, so it'll be hundred and seventy.
No, I mean, I meant as far as, what's the month? Month, yeah, the month.
For the month? Oh, I can find out. But I thought, man, it'd be, to do something special like that would be, would be really nice.
Main Street's already working on something, but we don't want to.
I'll try, I'll try to find out what month it was.
Two hundred and fifty, US.
And about the squad car, everything's done, I'm waiting on one more bid, they're striking. Just to get one more bid.
And I, Matt sent me a picture of the side of the police car, what he would like to get the.
Is it black now?
It's gray.
That was white.
Well, the one we were looking at was like a grayish color, but the one he found at Chicago Motors that they actually added in stock was a gray color and it was a twenty fifteen. So we got two years newer, same better mileage, and we paid nine thousand dollars for it, nine thousand nine hundred.
We paid twenty-four.
And we received seventy-three hundred dollars back from our insurance company, so we weren't out.
That's how, that's how we want to stripe it.
Yeah, I saw the picture in here, because I was thinking it was a white car, that's where I was confused.
Yeah, it was a white car. And since we.
Merchandise badge in the door.
We were between the twenty, twenty twelve and twenty twenty charger, all of the equipment that was on our white charger, we were, we were able to put on the twenty fifteen.
Okay, good.
And that was able to pull everything out and put it back on.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't have to buy anything.
Yes, it was, it was awesome, but they are looking into getting the sides painted and.
No, they wrap them.
Wrapped, wrapped, getting it ready.
What I liked about it, it was a detective's car, so it wasn't a pursuit.
That's it, so.
Oh, so it doesn't have a lot of bad miles.
Right. It's not near as rough on them.
But I mean, if you want to start fundraising or donation or anything for that hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary, let me know and I'll be more happy to write a check and the direct winners will start it off, so.
Yeah, if you would, by chance, would you like to send me?
It's like my parents and. The town's been good to me, I like to pay max another, so.
That's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Brian, bring that up, because you know, I didn't know that.
Yes.
That was.
It was incorporated in eighteen fifty-two.
Yeah, that's.
Logan Sport wasn't that much sooner than Walton. And they had to have Indian lookouts.
We're older than the Coke, Coke was incorporated in eighteen fifty-five. I'm so old, I was there for that though.
There we go.
All right.
Okay, our town manager, Lee, is involved, hip deep in the water, so I'm gonna ask if Mike Sager would read his report into record, please.
Yes, we had ten shut offs this month, last month, which is down a bit, right, Mel?
Uh, yes, actually, it was only nine.
Oh.
Compared to our fourteen on a monthly basis. He was wrong.
You shut somebody's off each year. Okay. Repaired and moved a pit on Gar Street, that whole thing. Replaced meter antennas, they get mowed, I mowed one once. They have to go take them out and put new little antennas on them. And they moved a meter pit on Carroll Drive. These things aren't easy to do. Cleaned the UV, the UV and the clarifier for the special lights that sanitize everything. Worked on the blower number one and the relief valve. Repaired the UV ballast ends, which he's been waiting on parts for them. Lower shut down due to heat on yesterday. So he has ordered a new board because it's blackened.
Yeah, it, it got fried.
It's, yeah, and the guy's already been there and put it in, by the way, she ran away.
The guy's already got it replaced, sweet.
It's done.
This is the circuit that pretty much controls the on and off switch.
This is what, this is what saves your, it turns the power on when the power goes out, it's automated.
But there's a section, you can see where it's smoothly, but this is like a, what, three thousand dollar breaker?
Yeah, but we don't know how much it costs to put in there.
So he's getting.
I mean, we were worried about it being ten grand, so he's thinking around three grand plus whatever the labor is.
I mean, he, he had the, the breaker kept flipping, or the switch wouldn't work or something for a while, and he finally figured it out.
Automatically, it automatically kicks on and cycles on Tuesday. So he keeps, it's got the auto dialer and says, hey, there's, so. He found a, he found a little smoke circuit board. Anyway, it's already repaired and we're stuck with the bill, not much you can do about it. Yeah, because those pumps have to run if the power goes out, you have to have that generator ready. The distributor pipes for the reeds, they had pipe number two had to be repaired, it was broken down. And we definitely want to keep those reeds because that saves us a bundle, because of the, like y'all bet. Bag them and then have them specially removed, where we get to put them in the reeds, it grows up, it dissipates. We trim, and he got three badges, you trim them, start over. It's a sweet deal, and we grandfathered in on that, by the way. Okay, town equipment. Cut the street and repaired the storm drain at the elevator, which that was some really old storm drains. And so I was down there when they popped it open and the more they dug, the more it was caved in, they just couldn't. So anyway, they had to cut all that out and replace it, and it's, it had another one right over the top of it, so. And one serviced the other one, basically, so they just made that short fix and cured the problem. There used to be houses there where the elevator is. So there was no sense in having those drains there, so. The one was all we needed, so he switched it over to the newer one and all is good. They ran a little street sweeper on the Bobcat, that's a cute little device. And since I saw him doing that, I asked if he would come down to the, when they were gonna have the parade down at the corner of two eighteen and thirty-five. The state just keeps stacking up sandbags and busting sandbags and, and they had weeds and sand and dirt growing about five inches deep. So John came down with the backhoe and cleaned that up pretty good and a shovel and worked his butt off on that hot day so that our revelers for the Fourth of July parade would not be standing in weeds. And he did a really good job. So they took a lot of brush out, for some reason, we had twelve loads of brush.
I had two trees down from that storm.
So it's your fault.
Big pile it was, and they came the next Tuesday and took it all out, yeah, that one tree, didn't even belong, none of the trees belonged to me. One of them belonged to the house behind me, one belonged to Psalm, but they were on my property and I knew they would never come and cut them up, so I had to have someone come and cut them up. So yeah, a big, big load was from the trees that went down onto my property.
Sorry, Bill, huh?
Yeah. I turned around, sued Psalm and then I got them.
They had some really bad tires on the trailer. So Jake got ahold of me and he wanted these repaired and I looked at them, well, no. So the age on the tires, you know, they had bald, there were bald spots and the age was, I don't know, they were fifteen years old or something, so I said, just get them replaced.
Yeah, one of you probably got to review that invoice from Logan.
With my file. I was like, what the hell, because first I just kept seeing ball stamps and I'm like, give me something instead of ball stamps.
And the Monship Memorial Park. But, yeah, he wanted me to mention about the, the board and he wasn't sure about the expense, but there's really not much we can do about it, about replacing it. And that's the name of that tune.
No, it's for your generator, that board's for your generator.
Yeah, it's automated and, like I said, he didn't ever know that, but it tested itself on Tuesday and then, hey, that smells funny. And it keeps, it can turn on and off, yeah, so.
Okay, anybody want to take a comment or record about that report that he has?
I just, I don't know, this is where I should ask it, but when that big trash pickup happened, they didn't get everything, there's still stuff sitting around. Are they ever gonna come and get it, or can we pick it up, or? And you know why?
Because people didn't follow the rules.
No, that's, you know why they didn't? Because some of it's right by my house, like a couple people's houses, there's a recliner and then a big cat condo thing. Because I have my grandkids and my grandson was sick and we were up all night and they came at like, it was like five o'clock. Because I had a lot of stuff out this year and they had lights and were trying to see, and you know, I just don't think they could see in the dark. So they missed stuff, I think, only because of that, they just couldn't, like that cat condo's dark.
Well, there was a lot of stuff that was upholstered, that wasn't wrapped, and they couldn't take it, it wasn't wrapped, due to the fact.
These people just laying out.
Oh, sure.
They can't take it like they weren't wrapped.
Which somebody broke it in half and now it's laying there in two pieces.
Well, we will set things out because they got the business of like Coke or, or Lover Sport where you set something out and in two minutes, two hours, it's gone, you know, because I'm thinking, well, a little time like this, that doesn't.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that, would a recliner have had to been wrapped?
Yeah, it should have been.
It's cloth or like that.
Anything that was upholstered was supposed to be wrapped.
Yeah. I figured the cat condo thing, they probably just didn't see it and it was, you know, blended in with.
Right.
Similar to those people and just say, you see, to review for cameras or something.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's like, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still sitting around like a month later.
We sent the boys around to ask them if they knew the rules, and you had to wrap them or they wouldn't take them, and now.
I wasn't sure about front of drive. I wrapped my mattress.
It's their responsibility again, you know.
Yeah, I sent out, like, I made a Facebook post about it with the requirements of things.
I only paid attention to what I was.
Something I get lost on all the time.
Okay, well, it was.
Okay, well, that's all right, though, okay.
Well, I guess, though, that, like, where she asked, if we go around and they would wrap it, would they, would we have to get ahold of them to see if they could come and pick them up, or?
Did they miss their opportunity?
Yeah, did they miss their opportunity?
But I mean, like, eventually, they need to take it in.
Right.
Right, that's what I mean.
Take it in and wrap it next year.
That's where I'm torn, yeah.
Because we either haven't come by.
Because they had the opportunity and they missed it.
For a year, you know, I mean.
Well, that's what it is, it's May Day cleaning, buddy.
I'll be coming back at some point.
June second or June.
Okay, June day.
I couldn't believe they came that early in the morning, though, because I heard this crash out in front of my house and I'm like, what the crap? What else is gonna go wrong tonight? And I'm like, you know, they got these big lights, and I'm like, this is kind of cool.
It's like our trash, you never know what time of day they're gonna pick up.
Yeah.
You get used to it and then.
Their brand new truck keeps breaking down.
Yeah, it was a nice truck. While it lasted.
Till it wasn't, yeah.
Well, it was last week, got mine out, went out to, just out of town to get a friend of mine out for it. It was Cardinal six, saw one coming in, I thought, no way you got that side, because I saw him grab one.
Yeah.
Luckily, he hadn't put it out, but.
I keep.
Cardinal six was a little, little early.
Dumped it at the ballpark, they come in with their trailers, and I followed them and dealt with that crap before, it's just not fun to deal with somebody else's life. But I sit there and watch them do it.
Yeah, the school I work for, every Monday when we come to work, all the dumpsters are just full of people's stuff, like, and then we can't get our stuff in there, like.
Yeah.
The school can't put anything in there.
Legion will find, you know.
People dump.
Starts the stuff piled in there and starts like, it's just like, well, okay, you know.
Oh, gosh, the recycle bin.
Problem is, you kick somebody and it's gonna be somebody you know and then, you know, you got a new enemy. I, I'm having trouble making friends now.
Right, Sheldon? All right. Okay, we'll move on here, so our court treasurer will.
So nobody had any objections to Rick ordering a new circuit?
No, not much we can do. We have here to keep it going.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I put it in.
Well, it protects about fifty thousand dollars worth of stuff.
I know. Okay. So the agendas look different. I got an email from Erin Schreiber. She said that House ruled a new ordinance stating that board, any board meetings with an agenda must provide the officer's name, the appointing authority, and what their term limit is. So that's why I've added our names, since we're all elected officials, and what our terms are, the best of my knowledge. Because when we did elections last time. They told us that we couldn't run on an even year, so we had to run on an odd year. So I, I filled these in the best that I knew how. So Brian and Denise, your term will be done in twenty-six. So you will have to run in.
How long are the terms?
I thought they were four years.
But I was just on the ballot, but two years, though.
In twenty-two?
Well, I think we had changed the cars, they were odd, a couple of them were odd years.
So twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four.
We didn't let anybody expire at the same time.
Right, so, I mean, did that make sense? You were appointed in, but you forgot to run.
I have to run.
If you want to.
Yeah, he's just a smarty, good for anything, and then he just.
Slides in. But that's, that's why that's on there, just it was a new House rule.
Well, thank you for that.
So if it doesn't look right, let me know and I will get it corrected.
Just let you know, it doesn't, it's supposed to be four years.
I have to dig out the paperwork, they, yeah, I'll send you this much paperwork after your ballot.
You two were on the ballot in. You two were on the ballot in twenty-one for the twenty-two term? Or was it twenty-two to?
I don't remember, I have to dig it back up.
Yeah, cause we changed the, we changed that.
Cause then the, the four of us ran and they said that we couldn't run in an, an even year?
Yeah, you gotta be the odd year and then you start to assert your time on the even year.
Okay.
Cause I remember there, at one of the board meetings, they, they changed. You changed something so that you didn't have to have voting, voting machines ordered.
On an odd year.
On an odd year so that they were coordinated with general elections. If I remember.
Yes.
So that's why it's every two years. But we stagger. So everybody doesn't do it. Sorry Emmy.
That's okay.
Hey, you'll get to go through it with Brian? The month of June was pretty calm, we only had nine shut offs, so we are making headway. We sent out or applied three consumer deposits this, this month and communication from residents is improving. We've had several people call in and let us know of their new phone numbers, their new forwarding addresses. And then I forwarded along several addresses in town that were, we'd been receiving some complaints on or if. Some of our staff had noticed like birds flying in through the holes on the side of the houses. Cause there's a couple on Davis Street, there's one on Walnut Street. And then they're reviewing Brian Weaver's property as well, but I forwarded those addresses along, so if I figure out.
Felt hard, did they tear that down or did it fall?
He was in the process of.
Like you can see in there now and see what's inside.
He tore down the south corner.
Yeah.
In, in order to fix the wall that's busted.
Oh, I just noticed that today.
Yeah, they're supposed to be getting bids to demo it and that's what we read today at the planning meeting, but.
What'd you see inside?
We had to continue.
Something red, like I just glanced as I went by and I'm like, it didn't have, it was a part of the car.
Fix the building and fuck it.
Isn't there a lot of cars in there? Used to be, I only.
He said it was none of his property, it was a seventy-year-old man's property and he was having a hard time getting. Yeah, it wasn't around.
Sounds like it's scrapped.
Originally started renting that space off of Brian's dad, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
So Brian was in the parade.
And then, uh, I let you all know that state would, or state changed rules last year that by July one, we had to. Post all of our meetings on live feed, so this is our first meeting. I'll post our YouTube channel on Facebook and I'll send out a reach alert about it as well. On our agenda, we have trash, like the invitation for trash bids. I put the information I was given at our last meeting. And contacted Republic, On Point Waste Management and. GFL Environmental Services contacted me and actually stopped by the office, gave me a card and would, wanted more details about it, so. I have contacted the four big trash companies, so hopefully they will all show up on August sixth and. Be ready to ask questions and hopefully we'll get a good service for the next.
When's that meeting?
Um, August sixth at ten AM, that's the pre-bid meeting. And then the bid, we'll read the bid, the bids have to be in by four PM on October sixth. On October sixth, so our council meeting in October and that's when we'll, we'll read the bids. But I did reach out to everybody, they all seemed in, interested. On Point said that he thought we, our contract with Waste Management was until twenty-seven, so he was pretty excited I reached out to him. But, um, I mean, it, it was actually a really good month and Jenny and I were pretty positive with. How communication has improved and, um, we hopefully have made headway with on and offs, so yay.
And we just got a new family moving in today, came up today.
He's gonna be the new youth pastor for Walton Christian Church, associate pastor. I apologize, associate pastor, his name is.
Jeff Johnson.
Jeff Johnson, very nice name and his wife was real sweet too and they had two, their two kids with them.
They have four kids, they're two of them are college.
Okay, they had a son and a daughter and the son towered over both mom and dad.
He's only fifteen.
Oh goodness, he's gonna be a giant. Uh, but they were very, very polite, they came in right at the end of the day.
Just coming in, so your home is built for them and that.
Oh yes, they were very, very friendly, asked a lot of questions.
Really think your finances, everything kosher there?
Yeah, I mean. Nothing too wild and crazy. Well, that's every year. I'm sure everybody in here spends a lot of money on homeowners insurance.
I spoke with Matt about being tied during February.
I've, I've had a, a mom talk with him as well. A set down talk with mom and.
But what made me talk to him was. Something I found out when I talked to him is, you know, another one of those. Federal breaking up the law and that's, and he's driving an unlicensed vehicle uninsured and, you know. He was in a position, he had to tow the vehicle, he couldn't let the guy just drive away. So it really wasn't his fault, but to hear the person that he towed say it, it was a terrible thing, but he had no choice. So.
We had people in town who were a little confused on these walls, but we had the individual came in, wanted to file our paperwork for Galveston.
Oh yeah.
Somehow, oh well, we are, you know, we're town deals, so we are connected.
Yeah, the gentleman came in.
Emphasized that, he was his lawyer and he helped it.
Had his, he had his phone out and he said, you're on, you're being recorded, I said, okay, well, I'll answer whatever questions you need. And he said, well, I'm representing myself and my, my case against the Galveston police officers, I said, okay. Well, this is Walton Police, I said, so they wouldn't have anything to do with, with us, I don't, their rules may be different from ours. And he said, okay, but I just have some simple questions and I'm like, okay. He's like, so I'm, I'm an attorney now, and I was like, oh, okay.
I know, I know, trust is.
I know, I could, I could feel your faith. But he basically was just asking like. How does he view the camera footage, I said, well, not just anybody can view that camera footage, I said, you would have to have that subpoenaed and.
I was gonna say, did we agree?
I said, it would have to be all done through the court system, you can't just. Walk into the police department and say, I wanna see the footage from the night of, yada, 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 no, it doesn't work like that. And he's like, oh, okay. And then he asked me a couple more questions about footage and dash cams and I said, well, sir, it, it would just depend on what their guidelines, I said. But it's pretty well state across the board that. All officers have to have a body camera footage, they changed that like last year or the year before. And he's like, okay, so, um, if I need to see that, I, I said, you would have to go contact Cass County Courthouse. And if you're representing yourself, they might be able to guide you better along, but I don't know that aspect of it, we don't deal with. The courthouses often, or the city building.
Yeah, he shouldn't really have bothered me.
Well, I mean, I, I think I answered it as well as I could, just from the bits and pieces we pick up from. When Tom brings it to, before us, but I let him know that he, he wouldn't be able to see that unless he requested it or it was subpoenaed through the court system. But, um, I had him contact the Cass County Sheriff's Department, but. I said, I, I cannot get access to those, so I don't know how.
Even if it's our own, you wouldn't.
Yeah. No.
He didn't give a person like, second time that he was second quarter, he like, this stops now, get an attorney and he wouldn't put up a back, it's like, you just don't know what.
I mean, he was very polite, but he just, he made me giggle cause he's like, I'm an attorney now, I was like, oh, I wish it was that easy. I'm sure you feel like that less school bill. But, um.
It was interesting, it was just kinda funny, you know, whatever.
Yeah, you never know what, what we're gonna have walk through the door. But usually if they knock on the police door first, we know it's gonna be incoming when they come through that door. But I mean, it, it really hasn't been too chaotic this last month, it's been kinda nice, I guess. Warm weather, everybody's been at home or on vacation or what have you. Yes, sir.
Motion to pay the bills.
Okay.
Have we, since speaking of warm weather and pools and all that, have we?
We've had a few people.
We have that finalized finally, the pool, we did, gosh, we bannered it around for so many years.
No, we did it.
Have we had people, uh, making claims?
We have had, uh, I'd say we've had at least fifteen, twenty people contacting the league.
So they know about it.
Yeah, and let them know that, you know, I, I ran the water on this day, I let it run for an hour each day throughout these days and.
They're doing it with parameters to space by running.
It was a minimum, so.
It had to be a minimum of a thousand gallons for her to write it.
So many days within, and everybody's following along.
Tells when they stopped, yeah. Yeah, cause she can trace it, we don't need to send a meter all over.
Yeah, it's, it's so nice, um, but.
She knew when I had a stick, a float stick, she goes, what happened down there?
Yeah, we knew and then the softener broke.
I got a float that sets the hot water into the car wash and it decided it didn't wanna shut off. So you go in the back warehouse and it's under water. Nice steaming water, the windows clear up front were steamed up.
Oh, I remember.
Oh man, let you know, something not right here.
Why is it raining inside?
He made a motion, but.
Yes, and my, my question's on.
And second.
All in favor, please say aye. Okay, well, I don't know if you've seen back here, the little empty for bids, the little presser explains what. We're asking from them, what they have to provide in order for them to be eligible for bids. And, uh, very self-explanatory on the containers, the size of containers and so on.
So this is what went in the paper? The little one, and then the four-page paper, that's what they will get. Or they'll have time to ask questions at the pre-bid, uh, pre-bid meeting.
And people are starting to finally learn to put these containers out, not to put them up next to the car. Or jam backwards or put somebody else's container from another.
Yeah, it's only been a year or two.
It does take time, but they're learning. Cause they come down and say, well, they forgot mine, well, yes, he, he, cause he comes and he reports to them.
Well, didn't, you said they had camera on the truck?
Yeah, they did.
So it has two on the side, on each side, there's one attached to the arm that comes out and picks up the equipment, there's. In between, there's one in between the bed and the. The basic, the base of the truck, one on the front of the truck, one on the back of the truck. I mean, he stopped by and Jenny Lee and I went out and looked at it, it was the day of the blood drive across the street.
He's also pretty good about letting them know, uh, they pick up the trash in the street.
This is why I didn't pick up this house or like, um, we had one frequent, uh, resident that would go months without paying. The only way we could get them to come pay their bill is just stop trash service, cause they're not paying for it, so we're not doing anything wrong. And we had, well, one of their neighbors came up and said, you will pick up our neighbor's trash and I said, well, Jenny was like, sir. It is a situation you know nothing about, please calm down, well, he went up and started yelling at Todd. So Todd was on the phone with his direct supervisor and.
Who's Todd?
Our trash guy.
Trash guy.
The trash guy that comes up and talks with us.
No, I put my trash out on Wednesday and I put my bin away Thursday evening, so I don't know.
Yeah, I just assume everybody knows Todd. Our, it's our, our trash guy. He's a big goober.
He spends an enormous amount of time on your office.
Not with me. He'll sit in here and talk with Jenny Lee all day.
Hey, he's paid by them, so. Okay.
Yeah, and this was just basic information so you guys could see what it looked like.
Car and everything that's.
It was in the parade.
Yes, it was in the parade.
And they're terribly noisy, the lights are all hidden, you can't even see them in the grill.
That Matt, Matt and Tom are working on different prices for getting the vehicle wrapped and that's what they are.
Not like those kids, your old cars had those big bubble. Bring back. Go on, you just, there, next to you know they're there.
But I mean, for the most part, like the two, two quotes are like nine hundred. One, one says it's seven fifty, something like that, but it's out of. The printer is based in Kokomo. Wrap Works. But.
Are we supposed to okay one of those?
It probably would help.
Doesn't matter to me.
Cause he, he didn't have any preference.
I see where Matt requested a bigger envelope to get the picture from, were you able to find it?
Oh, he did. That's what that is.
That's the bigger one, I, I heard, I saw the one that said the four by four seven, it wasn't doing that.
The first one he sent them, I think was, once they got it, it was like.
Window sticker or something maybe.
And then I attached the, um, the paperwork that I sent to the B and B and, or showing proof of the payment for the vehicle and.
You said you thought about going through Clifford?
Yeah. And no, no Red Dog.
They were real close to the other one.
Yeah, for the most part, this one. The Clifford signs with sales tax and stuff, which I don't think we have to pay tax. It's a thousand dollars to get it fully wrapped.
You have a preference on which wrap you want? What company?
Clifford.
For your car? Now you got Clip, Clifford.
Wrap Works's.
The Wrap Works. Let me put you on speaker. Say that again, Matt.
Uh, Clifford signs, that's all Howard County's cars and they do a pretty good job and they're local and if something happens, we could just take it to them to get it fixed.
Alright, that's what we wanted to know.
So, alright, well, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's been quite a few. So I'd like to motion to, uh, move ahead with the Clifford signs wrap for Matt.
Matt's recommendation of Clifford signs.
Got a motion, okay, and then a second please.
One second.
You seconds up, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, aye, just passed, very much. Okay. Alright, do business. Oh, I forgot about this one. Nation of, who did this one, oh, I'll write that down.
Who motioned, Brian? And then Denise.
Mike motioned.
Who, Brian did it?
Denise seconded.
Okay, I got Denise.
Simply said, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, and then, um, Jo, Joellen Ironmonger.
I knew her.
She rented the community center at the end of last month and she said some of the towels in there were a little rough, so she took them home to wash them and then she ended up just throwing them away and replacing them with brand new ones. So she brought in, um, like probably about four or five different towels to put in like the kitchen at the community center.
Oh, that was it?
Yeah, it wasn't anything crazy, she just, she wanted to give back a little bit.
Well, I would hope so. Okay.
You were baby, you were fishing for that, weren't you?
Alright, I'll open that up for anybody who has anything for you to bring up, either the audience or members of the board. Turning or anybody? Anything they wish to add or subtract, nothing?
I'm ready for my supper.
I, uh, yes. I dropped off a sheet today. All the accounting for the fireworks.
I have it.
If anybody.
That was a good show.
Yeah, it was very good.
Everybody gripped about it. Everybody just gripped about it. Because they were all hip on this big twenty-four inch thing that made the Facebook or whatever and then it went.
Oh, did it?
Well, not really. Well, it, it did. I know they did. But, uh, from the rest of the towns view, I have it on my phone. It's.
It, 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 yes. But what, it was still a fantastic show.
Yeah, but that's why everybody's rapid, because of the big thing that didn't happen. Believe it or not, I, I only saw about, I don't know, four discouraging remarks on Facebook about it. It wasn't that, that bad, but.
I had over a dozen people like, listen, they are all great, so. They didn't say anything about the, yeah, but then of course I could hear from my spot, but then I was inside. But I could able to see.
I could see it out, I'd look in the window, yeah, so I'd be cloudy air.
So ne- next year is the, is the, uh, two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary for U.S.
Yes.
And our intention is to bring that twenty-four inch shell up a lot closer.
And trim all the trees.
But anyway, you know, I can't say exactly what's gonna happen next year. That's our, that's our intention and we intend to put on a maybe show next year.
Well, on behalf of the town, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would you?
You're welcome.
It was beautiful.
It's for the little towns, so, great. Okay. Anything else anybody has? Alright, then I ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Alright, my question for adjournment, Brian seconded that motion. All in the papers, say aye.
Hey, wait a minute. The attorney didn't get to speak yet tonight.
It was the look, it was the look on her face that showed it all.
Well, yeah.
I do thank you for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
Where'd you steal this?
Well, thank you everyone for coming. I gotta end stream.
Jim said it worked. He watched for a few minutes.
Yay.